Now I'll turn to Article Five. To see if the town will vote to create a bridge maintenance or construction capital reserve for the purpose of maintaining or the construction of bridges. The offsetting amount to come from the unassigned fund balance. This represents the state of New Hampshire Additional Bridge Fund, SB 401, received in 2022, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend, recommended by the Selectmen. And the bottom comments, the first motion. Someone like to move? Thank you, second? Alan?
Okay. Wow. So, the Selectmen draft the warrant articles. The Selectmen send those warrant articles to the Town Council, and then they go to the Department of Revenue and Administration, who frequently rewrites them. This one was rewritten, so what it doesn't contain is actually a description of what you're voting on. It's very helpful, though. So, residing in our unreserved fund balance is forty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars of state money. It was given to the cities and towns by the legislature last year of the Assented Bill 401, and it is explicitly given the purpose of constructing or maintaining bridges. Unfortunately, we've already maintained and reconstructed our bridges. This money can only be used for new construction or maintenance, and so before the meeting asks, we already asked if we could use it to pay off the bond payments on the bridge we did last time, and the answer was resounding no. So, since this money is restricted for this sole purpose, we recommend creating a capital reserve fund to hold that money for the next time we need to replace a major culprit, or we did last year on Royal Road, or one of our remaining... We only have one remaining bridge in town that we haven't rebuilt recently. There's no tax impact to this, and it would be an inter-fund transfer of forty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars from the unreserved fund balance into this new capital reserve coming through. Any questions? Any questions? Yes? David Day, Oxbow, Conroe. Just a quick question, if we don't approve this, what happens to the fund, with those funds of forty-five, forty-one dollars?
They still sit in the unreserved fund balance, but we can't use them for anything unless it's a bridge.
Any other questions? All right. I will call for a vote on this. If you're in favor, to see if the town will vote to create a bridge maintenance or construction capital reserve for the purpose of maintaining or construction of bridges, the offsetting amount to come from the unassigned fund balance, as noted in your town report. All in favor? Yes. All opposed? No. The motion carries. Article Six. To see if the town will vote to change the purpose of the existing transfer station capital reserve to the transfer station upgrade capital reserve fund for the purpose of upgrading the current transfer station, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend. Two-thirds vote required, recommended by the Selectmen. Do I have a motion? Yes. Second. All right. Kent?
So, I'm going to speak to this article. I needed to have your town reports, and you don't show where the capital reserves are located. It's page thirty-six in the town report. We have, in that fund, just interest, and the rest of the money's been spent on, I don't know what, but what's left is that if the interest has accrued over the years, we would like to move that amount of money into a fund to work on the transfer station in the future. We have Canadians working on it, and at some point, we're going to be coming back to the town looking for funds, and this would be one source of this progress.
Okay. Any questions? Yes?
Right, Keith, White River Road. I'm sorry I didn't read this beforehand, but I believe that we need to close the fund and open a new fund, per state recommendation of how to handle this, which would require an amendment, which I haven't got it written down yet, but if you give some time to that and we move on to another question, come back to it, we can amend the order appropriately.
Yeah, Greg, we thought so too, and we actually proposed two written warrant articles. Close the old fund, create a new fund and hold it over, and the DRA changed it to this, and this is how we want you to do it.
Oh, gee.
Gotta love democracy. Any other questions? Okay. Oh, yes. Excellent. A snow clearer. Extraordinary.
Lisa Carlson, Royal Road. Would you please address the tasks that you're anticipating to work on at our transfer station? What needs doing?
Well, we are getting all kinds of things up there. We need to think a little bigger because we don't have enough space undercover so that you can deposit your trash and whatever else you bring into recyclables. So, we'd like to probably expand the roof system up there so we have more area undercover. We've talked about purchasing the newer compactor system so we're not using the running diesel truck to do that like we do presently. There's quite a few things that we're working on. None of them are very far along. This year, we did spend close to eighty thousand dollars between bringing in a new service to the dump so we can have an upgraded bailing system there, and we also bought a baler for the dump, so those are some things that are ongoing at this point.
I've heard some conversations in town about electrical or water concerns, so can you address those?
The electrical right now comes off the road. It runs through a neighbor's property onto the transfer station property. We actually got it off the road, and we got it partway in there, and we can't purchase a four-hundred-amp service. So, we're waiting on that right now to finish that project and to be able to hit the baler up when we get there.
So, we can't purchase a four-hundred-amp service because why?
They're not making them. I know this sounds amazing in this day and age, but we have been at this for since August of last year, and we still have not seen that piece of equipment.
Any other questions on the warrant?
Alice, Tom, Bernard Road. I think Lisa maybe alluded to it, and another one of the wells tested positive for PFAs. Is this something that is going to be used for correcting that?
We are monitoring it closely. We don't have enough data yet to react to that. We are working.
So, will this be used for that?
Possibly. It's going to be useful whatever we need as a town to do up there at the dump, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. To see if the town will vote to change the purpose of the existing transfer station capital reserve, transfer station upgrade capital reserve fund for the purpose of upgrading the current transfer station, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend. Two-thirds vote required, recommended by the Selectmen. All those in favor? Your green cards? All opposed? Red? Motion carries. Article Seven. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriated sum of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new highway truck, wing and plow, and to authorize the withdrawal of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the highway truck capital reserve fund created for that purpose, recommended by the Selectmen. Do I have a motion? Second? Cheryl?
This will have zero impact on the tax rate? Right now, in the capital reserve account, we have one-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and forty-six cents, which one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand will be drawn for the new truck. If you have any questions about the new truck, or you'd like to ask the owner to have our duty drawn, I'm calling to speak to it because he won't let me go.
Do you have any questions about the new truck? Means it'll probably be whatever appropriate color it's supposed to be, and say something about Canterbury. I will call for a vote. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriated sum of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new highway truck, wing and plow, to authorize the withdrawal of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the highway truck capital reserve fund created for that purpose. All in favor? Your green cards? All opposed? Red? Or any passes? Carries? Passes? Whatever it does. Article Eight. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriated sum of thirty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars to pay principal, thirty-five thousand dollars, and interest, thirty-two, thirty-six, on the Gold Star Bond, set amount to be removed from the town's unassigned fund balance, recommended by the Selectmen. Do I have a motion? Emily, and a second? And Kent?
So, back in two thousand and three, the town bought the Gold Star Farm down there on West Road, across the Boswell Bridge, and we set up a series of payments, and in two thousand and six, the Brookford Farm bought that piece of property from the town. And so, what we've done is we've created a... We've just taken the monies that are in there, and we're using them to pay off the debt that was incurred at the original purchase. So, it's not costing us anything, it's just paying off those balances. Is that clear or money?
I look close to paying on.
I have a look it up myself because I don't even remember.
This is an article that appears every year in our warrant, so nothing new. But anyone who has questions or comments? Yes?
Two more payments after this year.
Two more years?
Two more years.
All right. I will call for a vote. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriated sum of thirty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars to pay principal, thirty-five thousand, and interest, thirty-two, thirty-six, on the Gold Star Bond, set amount to be removed from the town's unassigned fund balance. All in favor? Your green cards? All opposed? Red cards? Motion carries. We now jump down to Article Ten. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriated sum of seven thousand, five-hundred dollars to purchase a zero-turn mower and withdraw funds from the highway equipment capital reserve fund created for that purpose, recommended by the Selectmen. Do I have a motion? Yes. And a second? Okay. And Kent?
So, we need to keep the town moving, and our previous mower was bought in two thousand and fourteen. I asked Roger today what his opinion of the machine that we're discarding is, and he said it's a... It's two thousand and fourteen, and here's the quarter of oil leaks mowing, the hydraulics are crying, and the mower deck has been folded three times. It's been well used.
Okay. Any questions? I will call for a vote. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriated sum of seven thousand, five-hundred dollars to purchase a zero-turn mower and withdraw the funds from the highway equipment capital reserve fund created for that purpose. All in favor? Your green cards? Any opposed? The red cards? And the motion carries. Article Eleven. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriated sum of seven thousand dollars to refinish the town hall floors, recommended by the Selectmen. Do I have a motion? Yes, Rachel, and a second? Okay. Kent?
So, as many of you who voted last week, or last Tuesday, remember, the floor is becoming rather thin, and when we get lots of water on it like we did that day, it is not doing the finish any good. So, we, in anticipation of not having to replace it any sooner, would like to spend seven thousand dollars to refinish what may be our final screening and reapplication of urethane to what is a well-worn maple floor. We hope this finish will get us through several more years.
Any questions? Holly?
Just Polly, Holly Canary, Northwest Road, just because I don't understand. Stuff like this, Article Eleven, Article Twelve, Article Thirteen, that kind of stuff, is there no kind of capital reserve thing that we use for that kind of stuff?
There is a building maintenance capital reserve fund, but it was established for the purpose of handling emergencies, not routine or pre-planned work that this meeting should actually have an opportunity to approve or disapprove. We hit the fund last year for five thousand or six thousand dollars to replace the steps on the town hall when the steps failed. We've used the emergency maintenance fund in the past to take care of insurance deductibles when the storm took part of the roof off the house and museum. That's what that emergency maintenance fund is for. This is the sort of routine project that we like to put into a separate warrant article so that, one, there's transparency, and, two, so that we don't memorialize big increases in the operating method for specific and special projects. So, that's why you see these little warrant articles.
Okay. Another question?
Teresa Lyman, Shankar Road. I am a long-time contract dancer, as many people know, and I love a beautiful floor. But I've known a lot of town halls that have refinished the floor and then decided no one could dance on it. So, I hope very much that once the floor is refinished, people can still dance there. That's part of what I'm all about.
Sounds good to me. Anything else? Yes, hope so.
Jeff Hubble, Hackaway Road. Being a carpenter, I'm wondering how long will this floor last? When will we have to have it be urethane again? Because I know my floors in my house get reurethane all the time. And what the cost of a replacement for it might not be a nice wood, but it could be some kind of composite that would last a lot longer. Shame on you.
I will allow that. Teresa can dance on it, that's for sure. Well, I think you had talked about before, it's thin.
It is thin, and this will probably be the last refinishing of that floor, unfortunately. So, males aren't showing through. We hope to get at least one more, and we talked to the finisher, and he suggested that maybe another couple of years from now, we put another coat on, we maybe get it further alley from the mass. We will keep the money as long as we can, and we'll replace it with wood, I hope, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. I will call for a vote. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriated sum of seven thousand dollars to refinish the town hall floors. All in favor? Green cards? All opposed? Red? Motion carries. Article Twelve. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriated sum of seven thousand, five-hundred dollars to purchase an air conditioner slash condenser for the municipal building, recommended by the Selectmen. Do I have a motion? Anybody who wants to get in the minutes for next year? Perfect. And a second? I missed it. Well, I guess I'm in the minutes, I'll walk around. Anyway. Cheryl?
Yes. Twenty minutes ago, the municipal building was built. Everything was put in, except one important thing, an air conditioner. And as you all well know, every summer, it seems like we have long extended heat problems in the building itself for the employees. They are going to be... They would be helpful to have the air conditioner. And this is a small amount paid to keep everybody comfortable and healthy.
All right. Any questions? Yes?
Beth with Gwynne, Southwest Road. As a member of the Energy Committee, I just want to check in and see how efficient this unit will be, and whether it is an air-source heat pump sort of thing, or if it's a traditional energy hog, air conditioner, then it might cost us more electricity.
It's most likely going to be a mini-split.
Maybe, right, to Royal Road. Someone who has heat pumps and supply can be both. Just curious, have you guys explored that? Just as an extra option. I know we have all those solar panels over there, so we've got some good energy there. Figure it might be worth it. Just curious, if you guys did an investigation for just offsetting it, since literally air conditioner and just a heat pump with this reverse valve, so I'm just curious.
Just a heat pump?
Just an air conditioner. Yeah, I was just curious. I know a lot of these splits can do bolts, so you might just feel it offsets some energy costs, that's why I was curious.
Yeah, but heating portion already exists, so.
No, I understand that. Just it's an offset if you already have electricity that you get in through the solar panels. Just an offset, that's all.
Geraldine Stroud, next to Lisa now. I'm confused, is it a heat pump or an air conditioning system?
It's an air conditioner.
So, it's not as... Okay.
Yes?
Ruthie, White River Road. I also have her question. I'm really concerned, like, that you don't know exactly what you're going to buy at this point with that seven thousand dollars, and is it going to give air conditioning to the entire building, or what portion? It doesn't seem very large to...
Since Kent inspected, price is distinct, let's do this. Yeah, so, there are conventional air conditioner compressors that air condition probably fifty or sixty percent of the building now. This is going to take, which is just the office space, not the truck bays, but this is going to take care of one section, the last section of the building. When it was built, the air conditioner compressors were never installed. The town is starting to run out of money, so that's why they're going to save some money by not installing them. The line sets were run for the conditioners. This one has been installed, so the scaling unit's been installed, but it's of a generation that the refrigerant is probably no longer available. So, the estimate that we got from the company that came out and looked at it suggested that we install a ductless mini-split system. It would be cheaper, more efficient, and easier to maintain.
So, one part, because I... We have ductless mini-splits, and you do have to have air circulation in the whole area that you're expecting. So, I'm just wondering which area this is?
This is just the one area. It's the back hallway of the fire station, bunk room, and two office spaces, and that's all handled. The rest of the office spaces are handled by the conventional compressors that are outside the building.
Teresa Ratchell, Center Road. I'm curious, when we decide to do things like this, and the next article about the ductless AC and heating, and even stuff like fire engine and what we're doing with the transfer station or not, is there any consultation with the Energy Committee on this?
There hasn't been on this particular item. And I'm not sure what we consult with, right? The units do what they're supposed to do, and their size to do it. So, no, not on this particular item.
Okay. Say the beginning again, what about Article Thirteen, with the ductless AC and heating?
That, we are trying to replace the heater, the gas-fired heater that is in the meeting house, and there's two reasons for that. One is to get a more efficient heating and cooling system in there, but the other is to cut the aircraft engine that runs when you're trying to hold the heater in there.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking more globally in terms of just maybe in a policy to consult with the Energy Committee on things like this, because, I mean, there's so much, so much energy changes coming, and I don't see how... It seems to me that if we have a dedicated Energy Committee who is, like, looking into this client, these kinds of things. For example, someone from the Energy Committee sent something to my husband Steve about energy used at the transfer station today, which I thought was very helpful, as he looked forward to doing stuff like that. So, I guess I would just recommend that if we have an Energy Committee, we should take advantage of it as we do these different kinds of energy-intensive or energy-using projects. Thank you.
That should point to the reason, and when it's a project that has, that lends itself to that type of consultancy, so we spend a lot of time working with the Energy Committee on energy use in the high base and the garage, and trying to figure out systems for fans and circulation. So, we certainly have consulted with the Energy Committee in the past, and I'm sure that the new Selectmen and this board will consult with them in the future.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I will put it to a vote. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriated sum of seven thousand, five-hundred dollars to purchase an air conditioner slash condenser for the municipal building. All in favor? Your green cards? All opposed? Red? Motion carries. Article Thirteen. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriated sum of seven thousand, five-hundred dollars to consolidate ductless AC and heating unit at the town meeting house, recommended by the Selectmen. Do I have a motion? Second? Way in the back, this. I've got a report, and it's great. Cheryl will be speaking to this article.
As the judge stated to the above article, I guess I would like, if anybody had any questions or any clarifications on this, I know that a lot of people, when we had to go to the meeting, when the aircraft carrier took off, the interference with the sound on your home computers in your phone. And I see people nodding their heads, and they've been at meetings, and they don't want to get it further started. You have to really speak up, and it isn't efficient as I would do, and it will be more efficient. Any questions?
Questions? Take it, that's a question, next.
This question is sort of the opposite of my last question. Sounds like it might be a heat pump or a mini split for this as well. Mini splits unfortunately don't do well when they are turned up, when people use the room and turned down, when people leave the room. Um, it turns out to be a real stressor of the mechanism, having caused early failure. So, um, you might want to consider not a mini split for this application.
Thank you.
Okay, other comments or questions? Yes.
Ruthie, again, um, I, we do have a mini split in, for a space, it's about that same size. It was both a while ago, but this seems like a large amount of money, was this already, um, a proposal, we can do a couple proposals that we're checking out?
Two.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $7,500 to install a ductless AC and heating unit at the town meeting house. All in favor, green cards? Opposed, red cards? The article carries. Alright, yes, sorry, now that we have passed the time, the article about the fire engine. Hey, back, if Article 2 has passed by a vote of 178 to 21. Alright, um, to see if the town, Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for engineering, survey, wetlands map, permitting and conceptual design of a second entrance to Maple Grove Cemetery. Recommended by the selectmen, do I have a motion? And the second? Kent?
Um, I'm gonna recognize, uh, John to speak to this first, John Gogo.
John Gogo, I speak on behalf of the Cemetery Trustees, Van Cody, Sam Patsy and myself in support of this warrant article. State statute requires that each town must provide a cemetery for the interim deceased persons. Our only active cemetery in town is nearing capacity. Over the past year, the Cemetery Trustees have been working on preparing the layout of more graves at Maple Grove Cemetery on Baptist Road. During this project, it was decided that a survey of the property is necessary to best prepare courts for this project, which will include clearing a new area and the construction of a second entrance to the cemetery for Baptist Hill Road. We are working closely with local partners to accomplish this planning stage. We are, um, for generously donating their time. However, any materials or permits that are necessary to complete this stage will need funding. We would appreciate your support, thank you.
So just to build on what John said, uh, Maple Grove Cemetery has been, uh, expanded several times in the past. We have a chance to clean up part of it that, uh, will extend our burial, uh, space towards the, uh, Baptist Hill roadside of the cemetery. Uh, it will probably be the last that we'll be able to do, at least in that area, and the next place that we'll have to look at is the parking area that we use. So, um, it seemed like a good time to clean this up, and we want to remove some trees. We want to, uh, bring in a access road off of Baptist Hill Road so that we have a place to put the, uh, overburden that we end up with on burials and to put, uh, wood that we cut down there and dirt and leaves and stuff out there. So, um, we're asking you to, uh, support this and get this a little start.
Okay, any questions or comments? Yes?
Uh, and then a question from Southwest Road. Um, why don't we need a second entrance, I mean, we have some purposes for it, but that comes another, um, road that needs to be maintained, um, has, you know, there are things just in building, but we're not asking this right now for money to build, that is possible for engineering or surveys studies, so that there's going to be a conditional expense to put this particular road in. I was wondering, um, can you explain to me why this new entrance is going to be that much important for, um, piece of property that has got, shall we say, heavily visited? I know people go and, and visit their relatives and friends that are buried there, and that's a nice thing for them to be able to do. Um, but building a whole new set of infrastructure in there is going to be costly, um, you're gonna come back next year asking for more money for that. And I want to make sure that you're all aware of what we're getting into here, because it's got ongoing maintenance, it's got all of those things. Why can't some of those purposes be done just using current entrance, thank you.
So, uh, before we have any plans drawn up, we, we did spend a lot of time with various contractors talking about how this would happen. Part of the problem there is that we can't bring equipment in from, uh, Baptist Road because we'll, we'll tear up the road going up the hill there, which is going to be maintenance. And, uh, we'd have to repair the, the walls that are there and the posts. And so, uh, in looking at the total project, we're, we're asking to put in a dirt road, it's not going to be tarred or, uh, any hot top on it. And, um, it gives us access to a piece of the land we own all the way over to Baptist Hill Road. And so we would like to be able to utilize that to store our leaves and dirt and stuff, which we now have within sight of the burial ground itself, and we'd just like to clean that area up and, and that will, that will do that for us. And it gives us a second entrance, I don't know if it's that important, but it is to get people in there and service this country.
Yes?
John Sutton Morse, Happy World Road. Um, could you speak a little more about what the long-term, I mean, it sounds like this is phase X of many more phases, do we have a sense?
Yeah.
Once we expanded, how much more?
That area, I think it'll support, uh, much more expansive at all. We do have some more space, I don't know if many people have been up in there, but we have an area that we use for parking right now. And it's, it's a good location for parking, because it's flat level and gives us access, even though it's a steep climb to get up into the old section of the cemetery. We have, we have an area along the side of the wetland, we'll be right close to the wetland when we're done. But it'll give us, uh, probably another several hundred burial spots, is what we would like to think will happen there.
Any other questions or comments?
Did we make any money on the residents there? So they pay their own way.
Thank you for that question, yes, we do actually. Uh, we take the money that is, uh, for selling the grave plots in there, and we actually, uh, put, give it to the town. It comes into your budget, you'll see a little area for cemetery plots. Uh, so we do, it's hard because we can't, um, we can't put it into the cemetery proper, so we have to do it in this manner.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I will take a vote, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $15,000 for engineering, survey and wetlands map and permitting and conceptual design of a second entrance to Maple Grove Cemetery. All in favor, your green cards? All opposed, red cards? If it passes, and we move on to Article 15. To see if the town will vote to adopt the Canterbury Community Power Plan to authorize the Board of Selectmen to implement the plan and to take all action in furtherance thereof pursuant to RSA 53E. The Canterbury Community Power Plan is an opt-out program that offers more flexible electricity procurement. The plan will initially provide lower electricity rates for residents, or it will not launch. Initial participation in the plan can be declined, after which a volunteer becomes voluntary, recommended by the selectmen. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second here? Alright, and, uh, Kent and Bob? And I also believe we have a couple of new members of the committee speaking to this. I think we're gonna initially defer to our Community Power, uh, Committee members, Howard and John. Would you want to launch your explanation? I'm gonna introduce yourself, Howard.
I'm Howard Lawford, the Chair of the Canterbury Community Power Committee. Live on Baptist Road, actually corner of Happy Road and Baptist. Um, we spent a little time this morning talking about, this evening, talking about ways to spend money. We're here to talk now, for a couple of minutes, about ways to save money. And it's to put money back in your pockets and actually to begin to accrue some reserve funds for the town of Canterbury. Um, before we get started, I want to make a quick announcement, and that is that we got approval from the PUC this afternoon at the state level. So if you guys will help us out by voting yes tonight, we're gonna be on our way. I don't want to go into a, a long spiel, but I want to just cover three or four quick things, uh, and then see if there are questions. Number one, the most important reason for doing this is right here. This is what, this is what individual ratepayers stand to save. These figures are set for kilowatt hour on your electric bill. And those of us who live in the Unitil service area in town are present, and our default energy taxpayer, excuse me, ratepayers, are paying almost 26 cents a kilowatt hour. That's, that, that's about half the town on, on the west side. Those on the east side, in ever-source territory, are paying a little over 20 cents a kilowatt hour, 20.2. Now, for those of you who like math, you're probably already doing the calculations. But there's a cheat sheet on your, on your chairs, and you can see that the community power rate, the base rate for default energy service from Community Power would be 15.8 cents a kilowatt hour. That represents a savings of almost 40% from the Unitil rate and a little over 20% from, from, for, uh, compared to the ever-source rate. You, there, there are better. As, as Jim, as Jim said, this is an opt-out plan. So, those of you who are on default, either in the ever-source territory or the Unitil territory, are gonna be enrolled automatically in this plan, and you won't have to do anything unless you don't like the idea of saving money, in which case you can opt out of Community Power. There are gonna be three groups in town that are not in the position of, uh, of default energy ratepayers. First, we have a small group of ratepayers on the intervale, about 75 of them, who actually take electricity from the New Hampshire Electric Co-op. Uh, those of you who are in that area know that the co-op actually does pretty well. The co-op's rates are 13.8% right now. So, nobody wants, ever, excuse me, nobody wants co-op ratepayers to be automatically enrolled in Community Power because they're better off where they are right now. So, if for some reason they wanted to, they would have to opt in, but they don't get a chance to opt out because they won't be given that choice. The second group are, are ratepayers who have chosen competitive electric suppliers. And some of them are, many of them are offering rates that are lower than Unitil or ever-source right now. Those ratepayers who get their energy from competitive electric suppliers will not be automatically enrolled in Community Power. They can opt in if they want to, especially if, if they're gonna get lower rates from Community Power than they get from their current competitive energy supplier. But they will not be automatically enrolled in Community Power. But the rest of us who are default energy ratepayers, and they're, uh, 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 of, of Canterbury electric customers, 86% are default, either through Unitil or, or ever-source. So it's, it's most of the people in town, and most of you understand that big guys, manufacturing companies, large buyers, have always been able to negotiate for lower rates than the average guys. This is a way of letting the average guys, who don't want to take the time and energy to shop for competitive rates, to get the advantage of huge savings. We think it's a win-win for Canterbury, um, and I should say that there's no tax liability going forward for anybody. All the costs of this are gonna come out of the rates, the lower rates that Canterbury Community Power default ratepayers will be paying. Um, so I think I should, I should leave it there and see if anybody has questions. Yes, my sorry? Beth has reminded me that there's a third group, and it's a very important one. It's the group of people that do net metering because they have PV solar on their roofs. And Beth is gonna explain what happens to them.
I'm just gonna ask for a show of hands, how many people have solar that either fully or partially? Okay, this is Canterbury, I know I'm in Canterbury, but I see all your hands. Um, I'm in the same boat, and I'm pretty dark excited about, uh, Community Power. Um, right now, um, our group in town and the Community Power group statewide is pretty excited about what, uh, Community Power will do for net meter, solar and other alternative energy suppliers. But, we don't have all of the information we need from the utilities in order to make that worth your while. So we are not going to, um, have you in the automatic category. You will have the option to opt into Community Power, but you will not be automatically put into Community Power at this time. We expect that in the next couple of months, um, the PUC will take action possibly to get the information we need from the utilities. And at that point, we will let you know through mailings that either we switch you over or it is a good time to switch in. Um, for those of you who have solar that is not enough to cover your winter use of electricity, these are some people who may want to opt in to get that lower rate for their winter time. Uh, we don't know for sure when this is gonna start in Canterbury. Um, and, and you will know whether it's winter or not when we send you that, and you can make your decision accordingly. What's important to remember is that you can opt in or opt out of Community Power at any time. There's no, uh, no requirement that you stay in or stay out, so it's very flexible. We want to make sure this is worth your while, so those of you who have net metering like I do, sit tight, it's gonna come. Sit tight, it's going to come.
Thank you, Beth. And I should say one more thing about the timing. Because I think we can say tonight, after a lot of very hard work by the Community Power Committee, that if we pass this tonight, we're going to be able to take advantage of these new rates this coming summer. Late spring, early summer, May, June, Canterbury will be able to enroll default customers in Community Power. You'll always be able to opt up if you want to take a higher renewable proportion of your energy from Community Power. There will be four rates altogether. But we now have assurances that we can go forward in May and June this year, rather than being in the second wave of towns, which we felt we were going to be in when we started this process back in August. So let me just do one other thing. Would the members of the Canterbury Community Power Committee who are here tonight just stand up? Thank you. Thank you, Lawrence, Kelly Stone.
Howard Moffett.
And Ken Ruswick, Southport Representative. Lenore, you're here. Good, we didn't see you earlier. Thank you. She chaired the EAP Craft Working Room. Okay, back to all the senators. Thank you.
Do we have questions? Yes?
Tom Perle, Kimoban. Two questions. What's the PUC?
Public Utilities Commission.
Thank you. And second question, many of us experienced like 100% rate increases here by Unitil or EverSource. What's the prediction about 15.8%? And will there be increases to that? Seven.
Everybody, I think a lot of people know this, we put a lot of information up on our CCBC website, or webpage on the town website. But for those of you who are not familiar with the way electric rates work in New Hampshire, those rates change basically every six months. If we go forward this spring, in May or June, we will be launching toward the end of that six-month period where these rates apply. So, these rates over here, utility default rates, are going to change between July and August. And almost certainly, the co-op rate is going to change between now and then, and the Community Power rate will change at about the same time. You're not going to see anywhere near the kinds of increases that we saw last winter. I think the best predictions are that rates for all customers are going to go down. Utility default energy rates are probably going to go down because frankly, New England basically learns natural gas to produce electricity on the margin. And we've got excess inventory of natural gas right now because it's been a warmer winter than we expected, even with the last few weekends of snowstorms that we've seen. So, we think that all of those rates are going to go down. And the differential, the margin, between the Community Power default rate and the utility default rates is probably going to narrow. But, we are pretty confident that the new Community Power rate is still going to be below both of those utility default rates. Does that help?
Other questions, comments?
Hey, Howard. Alice Binstone. Could you just really quickly give an overview of like, how does this work? I mean, I understand Unitil sends money, sends electricity through the wires to my house. How, where is the Community Power? Where are you buying power from? Just a quick, how does this work?
Yeah, it's kind of hard to do that quickly because this is a pretty complicated exercise. And we've got a lot of help from the Community Power Coalition in New Hampshire, which employs consultants who are experts. They go out into the bulk power market, and they do it in a way that is much more flexible than the utilities. And they're able to do it at different times when they get the best price, the best headcount, between the bulk power costs and what they're charging their retail customers. I hesitate to get too far down into the weeds. I'm happy to talk with any of you about this who are curious about it, if I'm not answering your questions right now. But basically, CPCNH, the Community Power Coalition New Hampshire, will be going out into the bulk power market. They will be buying bulk power at much lower rates than utilities are able to buy it because they have a lot more flexibility in terms of when they go out to the bulk power market, and how they structure their bids. We'll get the benefit of that. And because CPCNH is a not-for-profit, in addition to these low rates, we're also going to see about 60% of the savings between the utility prices and the Community Power prices. About 60% of those savings are going to start accruing in reserve funds that are accounted for as Canterbury funds, even though for the first three years... The first three years, those reserve funds are going to be held in CPCNH as energy reserves for the whole group of towns that we're working with. After the third year, those funds will be available to Canterbury to be used at the discretion of the selectmen. So, and that's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Pure and simple.
Other questions?
Isn't one of the key points here is that the stockholders are out of the picture, and they're not being paid? Isn't that really the bottom line?
That's the reason we can do this, Greg. Okay? It's because instead of having all of that profit go to investors, stockholders, and the investor-owned utilities, those monies are available to us and the other member towns participating in Community Power. Through the Coalition, through the Community Power Coalition.
Other questions, comments?
Joan, something more, just paperwork. I think this sounds like a great idea. I just want to make sure, because I'm extremely grateful to the EverSource crews who were out recently. EverSource will not be putting all of us at the back of the line in terms of which lines get prepared when there are winter storms and stuff, right? There's sufficient incentives that...
Okay. Thank you, Joan. I should have said at the beginning that your energy bills, for those of you who are not as obsessed with this as some of us are, your energy bills consist of two things. The energy supply rate, which is roughly 50% of the bill, and the delivery charge, which goes to pay the utilities, and will continue to go to pay the utilities, for the poles and wires, transmission and distribution, all what we call TND. Utilities get their profit from TND. The energy charges right now are a pass-through, but because the utilities have to go out into the bulk power market at rigidly defined times, and in a very rigid way, they don't get to take advantage of the flexibility, for example, that the New Hampshire Electric Co-op does. The co-op is going to be a lot like Community Power. Or reverse, Community Power is going to be a lot like the co-op. So, the short answer is, utilities are still going to be doing your maintenance on your poles and wires. If there's a problem with your wires, you're going to call the utility. If there's a problem or a question about rates, there's going to be a call center and a website, and several different ways of answering people's questions about that. The one thing we don't want you to do, and there will be a letter to everybody in town explaining all of this that comes out about the beginning of May. But the one thing we don't want you to do is start calling the town administrator or the selectman, okay? There will be other people on call 24 hours a day to answer those questions. And all of that is going to be explained in a letter that you'll all be getting around the beginning of May. And there will be a public information session shortly after that for anybody who still has questions and wants to kick the tires a little bit more. Okay?
Any other questions or comments? Yes?
There is one little misconception is that in those rates that you put up, Unitil had almost 26 cents, and EverSource had almost 20 cents. But you actually have to add 10 more cents to that to within your bill when you pay the utilities. So, we're paying for EverSource, I'm actually paying 31 cents because 10 cents is in the delivery.
Actually, it's, yes. It's actually more than 10 cents. But you're right. We're paying the utilities for delivery services, and we will continue to do that. Community Power can't...
So maybe that kind of gives him some information as far as the price goes. But then, my next question is, what is going to keep EverSource from that 10 cents that they're charging now? They're not going to be making their 20 cents anymore. What's going to keep them from doubling their delivery charge to make up the difference? Remember, their business is lost.
What's going to keep them from doing that is the Public Utilities Commission. They have to get approval for any change in their transmission and distribution rates, their delivery service rates. And our PUC is going to be watching that pretty carefully. They're going to make them prove why they need an increase in those rates. And the commission will finally decide whether to approve any changes or increases in that TND poles and wires charge.
Any other comments or questions?
No question? Yes.
Howard? I just want to let Bob say one minute's worth.
Yeah, no, it is. First of all, I know, Howard, you kind of called out your membership, but for Howard Moffett, Deputy Mayor, Kelly's Stormbreaker, Timmy, Lenore Howe, John Schneider, Kathy Doherty, and Ken Ruswick, this was a heavy lift. There was nothing easy or straightforward about this. And they did it all in the spirit of doing something good for this community, something that would benefit all of us. So, I want to make sure. I will also say that you select for the part through this to make sure that this was not going to be a burden on the town government, that there was no exposure to any risk or cost of the part of the town. And there is the bottom line is we get to leverage the strength of our community together and multiple other communities to buy power at a lower price. It's a voluntary program. No one in town will be forced to participate. And many people wish there was something like it for propane and heating oil too. So... With that said, there are many, many reasons to do this, and only since not to.
Ellen, if you withdraw your motion for a calling question, we will take a vote. All those in favor, the green cards? Opposed, red cards? Motion carries? And our lights team, go out. Article 16, shall the town of Canterbury readopt the optional veterans' tax credit in accordance with RSA 7220? Article 2. For an annual tax credit, the residents can profit with $500. This is the majority vote required, recommended by the selectmen. Do I have a motion? Rich, and a second. But Mainland, a longer here. Oh, sorry. And Bob, would you want to say something?
I am. I'm actually going to speak to Articles 16 and 17 together since they are effectively the same thing. This is housekeeping. Canterbury Town Meeting in prior years approved both the optional veterans' tax credit and the all-veterans' tax credit. The legislature made some updates to the RSAs that govern the credits, and the DRA is insisting that all the towns must readopt them in order to continue offering the credit. So, a yes vote on these two more articles changes nothing. It's purely housekeeping.
Okay, so it's paperwork. Any questions?
Teresa Lyman from Shaker Row. And I'm glad you said that they were pretty much the same article because I really couldn't tell the difference. And I want to speak in opposition to both of these articles. It's not an easy thing to speak out in something that's going to be perceived as against veterans. Veterans are popular. Veterans get aboard the airplane first. I believe so. Maybe it's only recent. I was told that by somebody that flies a lot. I haven't flown since God knows when.
Continue, Teresa.
Yes, sorry. I have several reasons, I feel, that I really have no choice but to speak out against these articles. I spoke out against them five years ago when they were first proposed. And one of the things that I said was that Canterbury is a very unusual town in many ways. I think a lot of us will agree with that. And one of the ways that Canterbury is different than most towns is that there's a strong history of pacifism in this town, starting in 1792 with the Shakers. The Shakers were pacifists. They refused to fight in the Civil War. They sent a couple of brothers to see President Lincoln, who gave them a special dispensation that they didn't have to fight, but said he wished there were more men of their caliber that were in the Indian Army. And a little closer to the present, in the 1950s, a group of people bought land, as it happens, just north of the Shaker Village, to form an intentional neighborhood of people that were pacifists. Often we were referred to as Queerville. Several of them were World War II conscientious objectors, people who had done alternative service rather than fight either in the Pacific or in Europe. And I am in no way saying the people that were on the service didn't do huge things, but I think being sent to North Dakota in the winter and Florida in the summer were not exactly the nicest things these men could have done. Perhaps the best known of this group of people were Don and Lois Booth, who contributed many things to this town. Most notably, perhaps, our best-known Riverland Conservation Area on the Merriman River. The others that come to mind are Bill and Mildred May and Dave Curtis. And my mom and dad came a little bit later than the others in the mid-'50s. And my mom and dad came a little bit later than the others in the mid-fifties. Five years ago, when this came up to vote, I was on my way home from my dad's. He had passed four or five days previously. I hadn't even gotten home. I ran out of time and came directly to the town meeting. And I should say about my dad, he was not, he did not do alternative service. He spent nine months in federal prison because he didn't believe in the military. And I know that cost him at least one job. There are another, a number of other people in this town that have come here largely because of Horizon's Edge School that was started by the Mays. And they also have pacifist leanings. So, I say this with hesitation, but I think these articles are dismissive to the history of those of us in town that have a different viewpoint to the heritage of this town and to the rather larger proportion of Canterbury's population that doesn't support war. I have a couple of other points to make. One is, I don't disagree that veterans have suffered terribly. So perhaps instead of giving them a discount on their taxes, maybe we could use the equivalent of that abatement for something more positive like treating, giving people treatment for PTSD that had served in horrible places. I can quote a resident of this town who told me once, Iraq really messed me up. What about the families of people that were killed in action? What kind of recompense do they get? If I had a son that was killed in Iraq, would I get a discount on my taxes? Is there some kind of formula for someone who served twenty years in the service? Would that get a greater discount than someone that served two years? And my third point is veterans are not the only ones that have risked their lives. What about our firefighters? Day in and day out, there are people in this town that are always there for us. And with this information, I'm using my friend Hubs as an example. He's been a volunteer firefighter, a volunteer firefighter for twenty-five years in the EMT. Eight years ago, when I fell asleep on Shaker Road and towed my car, I was awfully glad to see Hubs. He left his job site to attend to my accident, as he would anyone's accident. That means he didn't get paid for the time that he was there giving me a hug and taking my blood pressure. Hubs and all the other people that are firefighters have spent years scraping people up off the highway in the dark and asleep in the wind. It looks like a walk in the park compared to what I, I mean, my ten years as an ICU nurse look like a walk in the park compared to what they do. They're on-call day and night, all kinds of weather. Risking their lives not just fighting the fire but getting there. And risking their lives going to accidents where Shaker Marlin, when the weather's bad. All this is for a spend of two to four hundred dollars a year. So if veterans deserve a discount on taxes, maybe our firefighters deserve something just as much, if not more.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you to just thank you. Very good points.
Okay, I think I just about had finished. So, I ask people please respectfully to vote against this. Thank you.
You're next.
My name is Carol Flavin Beanstruck. I live on Lowell. During the Vietnam War, I spent, actually, I was arrested three times. The third time, simply moved to Minnesota. I'm opposed to war, but I'm not opposed to the warrior. I do not feel that voting for this somehow negates my moral stance on war. I think that what the speaker had already said is all true, is all true. We need to look at the article. And the article is for a tax credit. And it's in honor of veterans, not in honor or support of a war. I personally will vote for it and I encourage you to do this. Thank you for your attention.
Any other comments? And I will call for a vote. Shall the town of Canterbury re-adopt the optional veterans tax credit in accordance with RSA seventy-two twenty-eight, Article two, for an annual tax credit on residential property of five hundred dollars? All those in favor, green cards? All opposed, red cards? The article passes. Our last article, seventeen, shall the town of Canterbury re-adopt the all-veterans tax credit in accordance with RSA seventy-two twenty-eight B for an annual tax credit on residential property? Or shall they equal the same amount as the standard or optional veterans tax credit voted by the town of Canterbury under RSA seventy-two twenty-eight? Do I have a motion? Second? Okay, and Bob, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't think so. You've well covered it.
Are there any questions? Dee?
There was a good point earlier. Is there a way for that credit to go also to the volunteer fire department? To the firefighters of volunteer kind?
Without a debate about the many worthy ways that people serve the community, no. Because the RSA has had, there's no such thing as one rule in New Hampshire so we only have the authority that the legislature grants us. And so if the legislature were to create a volunteer firefighter tax credit, then we could, as a meeting, adopt it, but it doesn't exist for us to do.
Good question. Anything else? Yes, Rich?
I'm to blame for this. I brought this to the town five years ago. I am not a wartime veteran. I did not go to Vietnam. I did not go to World War II or Korea. I did serve my country faithfully for four years during the nineteen eighties. But the state came up with this law and it was allowed to, I'm a veteran, however, I'm not a wartime veteran. And the first one that the town just voted on was to give wartime veterans that credit. The second one was an amendment by the state to give all veterans. And I've been following it for a couple of years and I built this like one at the time when I proposed it by petition that it cost about one and a half fireworks and it still does.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I will call for a vote. Shall the town of Canterbury re-adopt the all-veterans tax credit in accordance with RSA seventy-two twenty-eight B? All those in favor, green cards? Opposed, red cards? The motion carries. We will now transact any other business that may legally come before this meeting. Anyone have anything? Mr. Markood?
I'm sitting down tonight. It's good for you. I thought I got enough exercise out there on Tuesday, but I guess I'm getting some more tonight. This is just a plea. It's just a short statement. Do you think there is a better alternative to using green bags at the dump? Do you think there is a better way to throw things away at the dump? Do you miss your treasure house? These topics and so much more are being discussed by your Solid Waste Committee. And we need your help and your expertise. Are you good at designing layouts? Can you help write a grant? Do you have ideas to share? Get involved and be involved. We need more members and we want you to contact your selectman, Ken Bresworth, up there. And he will screen the applicants. I will say that it's a slippery slope because the first thing I volunteered to do in this town was the Solid Waste Committee. I just called the recycling committee then and look where I am now.
All right, well, let's think about your thoughts about the treasure house. Any other things that are going before the meeting? Yes?
I appreciate the lateness of the evening, so I'll keep a brief. But there seems to be, whether you're on the town committee or a volunteer for it or not, you hear a lot about communication, particularly in regards to town boards, town meetings, even town events like the fair. And in discussions I've heard, even as recent as the candidate's night, one of the issues that seems to keep coming back is the difficulty in finding information from the town itself or communicating with the town if you're on this side or the other way. And I really think, trying to get a feel from this legislative body tonight, if there's any support for tasking the next select board with coming up with a better website that is communicative, that is interactive. It doesn't take much surfing, if you will, to go out and see that even with the current provider that we have, Civic Plus, that there's so much more that can be done. There's other ones, I pulled one off that actually was using the town of Plainfield in their advertising. Does anyone know where Plainfield, New Hampshire is? Good, it's about the same size as us with seventy more people, about five hundred thousand dollar less budget. And I believe even less town staff. And I encourage you to go out and see what an interactive website, and I'm not blaming anybody. But when we ask new people to town to join things and volunteer, we also have to enable them to understand how the town works. And I think this is probably the first place where people that are new to town in, I'd say, new generations are going to go. And as much as the town email, the church newsletter, Facebook, Facebook groups and whatnot are great. I'm not saying they don't use them. But there should be one source for official town news, business, calendars, how to register your dog and all of that stuff. And it already exists. It even has nice color compared to what we have. But I would ask if there's a motion or just a general feeling that we can do a lot better. And I don't think it would cost a whole lot more. But it would, I think, bring newer folks to town. And I don't just mean young people. There's lots of older folks that actually use the internet better than I do. But it would be, and from, I will say, from a board standpoint, the sharing of information between boards, between boards and town hall, digitally archiving minutes and agendas that people can find very easily, tax maps, the whole, and it's out there, so.
Thanks. Do you have a motion?
Is this writing? It has to be a writing. It's not an official motion, but I'd like to put your green card in here.
I would like... I, you know, I think within a year, it certainly should be feasible to come back with some sort of proposal or whatever. I think I hear Kevin volunteering, I don't know. I would be happy to be a part of it. Excellent.
So, does everyone think this is a good idea? Anything else for the meeting? One more thing, I decided to not forget. If you haven't loaded up your bags with books, take one on your way out. It's fascinating stuff. Free goodies.
Oh, yes. Oh, my God.
Steve Ratchell, Center Road. I just read in the conservation division section that Ken and I Lee Stern are working towards preserving four hundred acres of city in Canterbury. I'd just like to say thank you to them.
Anything else? I call for an adjournment of the meeting. All those in favor? And the opposed? All right, thank you very much.